Virginia Beach Development Authority, and I'm going to read a statement. On May the 8th, our Chairman Dot Wood sent us an email or a letter stating the following. On March 12th, 2020, Governor Northam declared a state of emergency due to COVID-19. Because of the catastrophic nature of the declared emergency, the City of Virginia Beach Development Authority has been unable to meet since that time. Pursuant to the bylaws of the authority dated December 18th, 2018, I hereby call a special meeting of the authority for Tuesday, May 12th, 2020, at 8:30 a.m. in the authority's boardroom at 4525 Main Street, Suite 700, Virginia Beach, Virginia. The attached agenda sets forth the business of the authority to be considered at the special meeting. To adhere to applicable safety regulations during the ongoing pandemic, only commissioners and essential staff will be in physical attendance at the meeting. This special meeting will be broadcast on cable TV and vbgov.com. Citizens are encouraged to submit their comments to the authority prior to the special meeting via email at vkelly@vbgov.com. In addition to online registration, any member of the public who wishes to make comments during the special meeting must also register with Vicki Kelly by calling 757-356-449 or contacting her via email at vkelly@vbgov prior to 2 p.m. on May 11th, 2020. Sincerely, Dorothy L. Wood, Chair. With that, this would normally be our public comment period, and as indicated in the letter from the chair, the public was notified that they could either email their comments or call in their comments. And according to Taylor, we've received no interest or no comments from the public.
That is correct, but in the event that a member of the public should want to come in person and join the meeting, we are live streaming in the smaller conference room next door so that we can assure that we maintain social distancing. Also, I think we need to disclose that we have two members of the authority that are with us electronically, though they won't be voting in the event that, Madam Vice Chair, you want to recognize them for comments. They can certainly participate in the discussion, and we have our Chair Dot Wood and our authority member, Nekka Shazar, on the line. Thank you.
Good morning to them as well.
Good morning.
Good morning. So for the regular meeting, we normally do minutes from the meeting held on February 18th. I guess I'll entertain a motion. We do have minutes from that meeting.
Yes.
Entertain a motion.
Move.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Same sign.
Aye.
Two more. March 2020 and April 2020 meetings are canceled, so we have no minutes from that, and we will next review our financial position.
Thank you. So again, to minimize the number of staff members in the room, if you all will allow, I'll run the presentations from here today and get up as needed. But I won't read all of these. You see, our beginning cash was just more than 4.7 million. We had some activity. You see receipts and dispersments, not a lot of activity there, but ending cash is not fundamentally unchanged at 4.713. In our incentive account, you'll see a little interest income, made a few dispersments, but beginning cash of just over 5 million, ending cash of 4.6. I do want to show you this today, as this will be an important, this will provide important context for our conversation that is to follow a bit down your agenda on EDIP Part E. Basically, we're calling it Ending Available Funding, or just call it our reconciled cash within our incentive program, just over $2.5 million. Like I say, your opportunity to discuss Part E will certainly affect this balance, but 2.5 uncommitted at present.
When's the end of the fiscal year? June 30th?
June 30th, yes. And so, great question. We anticipate another 2.2 to 2.3 million will arrive on July 1, you know, as part of our allocation of the cigarette tax, which, as revenues go, that one looks to be fairly stable.
With regard to that balance, of course, you're saying that Part E potentially could reduce that balance. The incoming funds for Part E, are they reflected in here?
They are not, only because that vote has not occurred yet, so...
Okay, so receipt and dispersment of Part E are here.
That is correct, so...
That's an important question.
Yes, that's right. So right now, the 1.5 million that we have, that is potentially in play for Part E is included in that 2.5. The additional 1 million that City Council will discuss tonight is not included in there. And so, I did not include the additional million because it's not yet been voted on, it's not yet been approved by the body. But in the event that that moves forward, those would be additional funds.
So the 1.5 is...
Is part of the 2.5, yes, sir.
It's already in our account.
That's what I was trying to clarify. So that is there, but the dispersment potentially is not there yet.
That is correct.
The other million's outside of here.
So that's right. So basically, if you move forward with the 1.5 million for EDIP Part E, you will have a $1 million balance to...
Right, thank you.
Something else to note that's interesting, and I don't want to stake ourselves to this yet, but we think there may be a provision of the CARES Act that will allow us to recover some of this 1.5 million. As things are, sort of the picture around what state and local government may have access to is starting to come together. We think that there's an opportunity to pursue some recovery of the monies that we would allocate for EDIP Part E, but I do not think it's important to count on that at this point in the conversation.
Right now, the 1.5 is part of our...
That is correct.
...fiscal year budget was part of the EDIP program, and council has just allowed us to create this new program...
That's right.
...in order to help these businesses out. Hopefully, we'll get another $1 million added...
Tonight.
...in that pot tonight. There's definitely a need for it. Any questions about the financial statements? Thank you, Taylor. Revenue bonds.
Okay. Thank you for bearing with me while I work through our technology.
That's pretty good. I'm impressed you got there.
So with this one, I'm not going to read you all of these. This is basically, this is at the request of City Council. In their last voting meeting, City Council approved the issuance of just, I think it's just less than $240 million worth of public facility revenue bonds. As you all know, we are the conduit issuer for that debt. I should also mention that Alice Kelly, the city's finance director, is with us. She's just in the hallway, again, so that we can maintain our numbers, but I'll...
Taylor, can I get you to hold for a minute? Nekka, did you have a question about the financials?
No, I did not. Thank you.
Okay, all right. Sorry about that.
And so, just, you'll see some notes here on the status of the municipal bond market. As it's no secret that the...
There seems to be some feedback. Could you all push the mute button?
Actually, Taylor talking.
Yeah. Lag on the technology, so somebody's watching it while we're talking about it.
Can somebody press mute on their feed? Dot, Nekka?
Yes. Sorry, what?
We're getting a delayed feedback of the presentation here that's coming through loud. So can somebody, can you press mute on your feed to us and then just unmute when you're piping in?
My friend, I'm on a telephone. Are you open to telephone?
Mute your phone. Yep.
Mute us.
Okay. Mute, mute, mute. Then I won't be able to hear you, right?
No, we won't be able to hear the background of the delayed feed. You'll be able to hear us.
Could be Dot.
That's better.
So we've had a series of calls with the city's, with Prag, the city's financial advisor over the past few weeks. Certainly, if you look at the municipal debt market, March, the month of March was terrible through, I mean, through the entire market, really destabilized the market. That appears to be an outlier at this point. Obviously, we're only 60 days, hesitant to say outlier, 60 days, not even 60 full days from the event yet. So 60 days in the world of financial markets is just, particularly bond markets, is just a matter. So it's hard to say that March is an outlier, but what we can say is, the market seems to be, and the data that some bond sales that have happened in April and now coming into May are suggesting that the market's trying to return to normal, although not there yet. That's, city's finance team believes it's, we need to be ready to move on this bond issue when, you know, basically, so that when conditions are right, so that when it's time to go, we can. That's not that we're trying to time the market by any means, it's just being ready to go. I won't read you all of these once on the municipal market, but all of these were shared with City Council, so I'm happy to circulate this to anyone that wants to read it. But I do want to get down to the last couple of slides here, and I think this is important for the public to see. This is the schedule of activities that this debt is proposed to fund. And so, when city, there was, anytime these conduit issuances happen, people, the council item reads as though, basically, because the authority has to issue it. There's always, always be confusion in the public that the city is giving this money to the development authority. You will see here that that is clearly not the case. This money is being used for city buildings, like the replacement of City Hall, or there is economic and tourism development, but you'll see, that's the Virginia Beach Sports Center, which is mostly complete at this point and scheduled to open this fall, 19th Street infrastructure improvements, Central Beach Convention District Parking, and Virginia Beach Bio Infrastructure at the much smaller number of 1.3 million. This is the road in our new innovation park. As you come down, and as this road, were it not for COVID, it was scheduled to open on April 30th. We're dealing, we're on about a 45-day delay there right now. And you can see roadways as well. So that would be, that's the proposed city portion of the funding. The remainder is for schools. Princess Anne Middle School, John V. Die, Thoroughgood Elementary. And so, just to note, this is not where we serve as the conduit issuer for this debt. The authority is not receiving this money and spending it on our activities. This is money that's being used to basically, at least half of it, I see Alice is in the doorway, Alice, at least half of this money is being used to restore cash that's already been spent, right?
Yes.
And the other half is to fund construction that's been planned for at least, you know, five or six years at this point, based on how we schedule our...
The project's underway, if the, the City Hall building is underway, and so it's half, half of it's been done and half of it's constructed, but the project's underway.
What is the revenue drop we've had over the last two months because of lockdown?
I would need David Bradley to speak to that specifically, but Alice, I believe they're projecting on a revenue drop in the last quarter of this fiscal year was...
65 million?
Between 25 and 30, is that right?
Oh, I'm sorry.
How much revenue are we, revenue loss have we projected?
For this year?
Yeah, in the last three months of the fiscal year.
About 60 million.
60, excuse me.
What percent is it?
Sir?
What percent?
60 million would be of, give or take, a $2 million budget.
Yeah. It's mostly trustee taxes, hotel and meal taxes, some sales tax. The percentage of the total budget is small. Of those particular revenue sources, it's almost 60 percent.
And also, it's important to note, as you're talking about trustee taxes, a considerable portion of your trustee taxes are allocated to dedicated funds like the tip and tap. Correct. And so, which will, so the general fund impact is actually much lower than the total impact on the budget. General, Alice, you may want to speak to...
We're estimating about a 3.5 to 3.7 million dollar hit on our general fund this year. We have done a lot of expenditure reductions to offset those revenues. We have a lot of attrition savings, we have some vacancy savings, obviously, and we've been very strategic in looking at what requisitions we're entering and making sure that we're not buying anything that's nonessential. And actually, I physically do that every night, is make sure all those requisitions are essential.
So the 65 million shortfall, we're only going to be short 3.5 million? That's excellent.
That's this fiscal year.
And it's important to note, and I'll thank, I'll thank our acting city manager, Tom Leahy, also, our deputy city managers, and Alice for her leadership in basically guiding the entire organization through a series of fairly drastic cuts in spending to ensure that we can close those gaps. And so, thank you, Alice.
So what are we, this, I guess, fourth phase of the CARES Act, potentially is reimbursement to state and local governments? Is that what you're expecting or are you hearing?
So I will tell you, I don't think we know. Andy Friedman has jumped into that space on the housing side, and I think already been able to secure some support. Obviously, we're going to look at what's available for EDIP Part E, but the big thing is we're, I think the conversation is to see, I think it's safe to say at this point, without having a crystal ball, that some funding is coming to the Commonwealth. The question will be, how is that, is that allocated by population? Is it allocated by need? And I don't think that we know the answer to that yet. What I can say that's strong for us is, we're the largest city in the Commonwealth, so if it's allocated by population, that's good for us. Also, one of the pillars of our local economy is tourism and hospitality, and so if it's allocated based on need, we're also in a strong position. It's just hard for us to comment on this, at this point, on specifically what that dollar amount could be.
And then Nekka has a question on the phone. Nekka?
Yes, hi. So how much of our revenue impact of the loss was due to the stay-at-home orders? Do we have a figure?
Nekka, can I have that question one more time? Sorry.
Sure. And I apologize if I'm fading out. Do we know how much financially we were impacted by the stay-at-home order?
So we're going to show you some data on that when we get to EDIP Part E. As it relates to the, I'll answer that two ways if I can. As it relates to the city budget, certainly, we incurred some cost in having to beep up technology and IT infrastructure to ensure that we could, that basically we could convert our workforce to a sort of remote environment. As it relates to the overall economy, we've got some data to show in a moment. Hospitality and high street retail have been heavily impacted, and to the tune, we can say at this point, just less than 25,000 furloughs in a six-week period. And we've got some harder economic data from the Commonwealth that we'll show you when we get to EDIP Part E, if we can wait that long.
I can, thank you.
So does that answer your question? Were you asking about the impact to the city's overall budget, or were you talking about impact to the region?
Impact to the city.
Okay.
We can, Peter Wallace, our IT director, has some data on that. We're happy to circulate, we'll get those numbers and circulate them to the authority members.
Thank you. Any other questions? So at this point, Taylor, you need us to entertain a motion to approve the issuance of the public facility revenue bonds?
That is correct.
Chair will entertain a motion.
Move. Back up.
All right, we have a first and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
Aye.
All opposed? Same sign that motion carries. Thank you. The next item is a request for approval of the use of the Town Center parking for the New Hampton Inn by Hilton. Taylor?
Excited about this one, because best we can tell, this project is still moving forward. And so, anytime we've got, I mean, coming out of the situation that we're in, anytime that we've got a project moving forward, we're calling it a good project. So I'll let you all read through those disclosures before I dive into the presentation. So we're looking, the project that we're working on is construction of a 14-story, 120-room hotel on Columbus Street here in Town Center. A series of amenities there. We're anticipating a Hampton Inn flag, and, you know, at 14 stories, we think it's a nice addition to the Town Center skyline. It's 14 stories because it is, jumped too far, excuse me. It's 14 stories because it is on a very small piece of real estate. You're, we're looking, this is our target parking. You'll remember, so this is, this is what we used to call the Dick's Garage, now it's just the Columbus Street Garage, but Garage, and then here's the little, the lake with the trail around it, and so it's this very small corner here that they would be, that they would be using to build the hotel. Here's a look from, here's a look from the other direction. This is a rendering of what the hotel looks like on that site.
It backs up to the substation, right?
What's that?
Is the substation right?
That's right.
How does that impact parking?
So, I'll show you. We did a complete, you all will remember, around the construction of Block 9, which recently completed with Zogger's American Dream Theater, first block that we'd added to the district without parking. So your direction to us then was, do the construction, then rerun a parking study to see what your impact was. We reran the parking study, we found out that we're, give or take, 50% occupancy in the district, and that was when, that was when Dick's was open. And so, we have more than enough capacity. The Dick's Garage, what we used to call the Dick's Garage, is traditionally, at that point, was the garage with the most capacity in it. We ran, I won't bog us down with the models, but our parking study, when we were updating, we had them run it considering this maximum occupancy during four times of year. We see four different traffic patterns here in Town Center, and in every scenario, there was, there was more than enough capacity to carry the load for these 120 rooms. We're not dedicating any parking, this is just use of the system. So in the event that the garage closest to this structure is full, they understand that their, I guess, customers will have to just, will have to drive to another garage and find a spot. But we think this works. And so, we also presented this to City Council, and here is, and just to make this work, here's, there are a few things that we asked for. The original plan, the developer's original request was to come off of Columbus Street and just sort of have a sort of motor court right there on the street. That did not work for us, because as you know, Columbus is primary artery into Town Center, we just didn't think that was a safe traffic pattern. We asked and they agreed for them to make a turn off of Columbus to do their, basically, discharge bags, motor court here, and then around the side and out. To do that, there were a series of easements, a utility line that had to be moved, and also as part of that, this corner is very important, we think, visually, and so we asked and the developer agreed that they activate this corner, there'll be a little outdoor café there with some landscaping that we think will be quite attractive as the property comes online. So I will say, the developer has been, has been, has been agreeable to everything we've put forward, the thing that, the thing that they need is obviously access to the park. And so, City Council has approved that action, and so it's with, with that approval, it's with, with City Council's approval, this is now ripe for your consideration, because we know that we can deliver this project so long as we're agreeable to them using your parking. So that is, so that is the request here today. Yes, sir.
Sorry, Taylor, we, Dot got disconnected, so we're just trying to get her back. I think I may have disconnected Nekka.
So, so there's no fees, no, there's no charge, so I...
Your call cannot be completed, it's dialed.
I think it's great, and the cost to build a building like that, that on a small footprint is very expensive. And I just want to be aware in the future that we need to start doing this at the oceanfront. And the reason is, is because it is nearly impossible unless you have some huge funding source to build a hotel without parking. And I think the only way that we're going to change the aging hotels at the oceanfront is to create persistent programs like this, that is mixed use between employee, the beach parking, and the hotels. And that, instead of getting into incentives that are...
Your call cannot be completed.
...that can be subjective. If it's a baseline incentive of parking is how we're, that's really the only way we're getting social front.
So couldn't agree more. I mean, basically, when we talked to City Council about this, what we talked about is, this is, what we're seeing in real time is, our commitment to adding parking mature, I mean, coming into maturity and bringing the additional development that we told the public we would get. So, so yes, we've spent a lot of money, about $120 million on parking here in Town Center over about 20 years, but now we're at a point where that parking, where Town Center's full, and that parking is utilized at about 50%, and that, that available parking is now bringing us projects that we weren't seeing otherwise. And so, so we think this is, I mean, this, we couldn't agree more, we're making the case for a parking system here, and it's, it's a great, and coming, coming back to Mr. Burns' question, which was, what's the grant amount? No request for grant. So that's, that was the...
And what is that hotel? Is it 25 million, or what did they spend?
I'm going to show you that on the next slide, but it's, we're in that range, yes, sir.
The one thing to remember, the property will be subject to the SSD, that's why they'll be paying the extra 47...
So that's a great point, Alex, thank you. So this parcel at present is excluded from the Town Center SSD. Another one of our conditions was that they agree to become part of the SSD, because we're now, again, there, we've got streetscapes to manage now, they're consistent with the rest of the district, and the developer agreed with that as well. So here's what's great, there's no EDIP that's contemplated as part of this development. Our only request at this point is use of parking. So we're, I mean, this, we're excited.
Yeah. Home run.
Taylor, what, with this hotel, what is the parking capacity that would be left?
So we, so we had, give or take, 2,200 available spaces on average, this is going to take 100, you know, and so if you get into the Christmas season, so if you, excuse me, holiday season, and it's a Saturday night, the holiday season, then, I mean, which is a single night event, I mean, so I think we approach, I think our highest density, and I don't have, I don't have that data in front, but it was like 67% was, was max usage on the system, even during, during that time of year. And so, we think, there's, all of our models suggested there was ample capacity.
Do we have any idea who's going to backfill Dick's?
I don't, I need to check and see if we formally announce that.
Okay. But there is somebody lined up, so that...
Yes. We believe that's right. Again, important to know, though, so no secret, we, right now, we are assuming everything is charging forward. It won't be, we won't really know what our, what our hospitality and retail project load looks like until we're out of this crisis. I mean, I mean, that's just an important thing to know.
That's a settle, yeah.
That's right. But Mr. Andy, to answer your question, we're looking at, they're saying they can build it for 19 million, which for 120 rooms is, that's a lot. What's great is, we've isolated the revenues, and we can show that over 25 years, $30 million contribution in taxes based on projections and increase in real estate value, along with 2.7, almost 2.8 million to the SSD, and just, just less than 6.2 to the Town Center tip. So we think this is a great project.
And again, all they're asking us for is to share our parking.
That's right. That's right. And it's...
It's a good deal.
And it does, and what it does is, it takes one of the last, takes this parcel, basically, it makes development of this parcel a known thing that fits within the district, so we're excited about that as well. And you can see, this is just more information on what we showed at City Council, and so we would, we would request your approval to allow this developer to use our parking.
I'll move it.
All right, we've got a first and a second. Any abstentions from this item? Taylor's going to abstain.
Nope.
All right, all in favor, say aye.
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 All opposed? Same sign. That motion carries. Next item is Innovation Park. Taylor.
Okay. You all have seen this one before, but we'll show you the disclosures one more time, give you a chance to read those. See this, there we go. So, this is, you all will remember, and what we have here, this is a request to amend an item you've already approved. So, you, we originally saw this as six acre parcel located with the Innovation Park kicking off construction there. We thought at that point that we were looking at a forty-five thousand square foot office, ten, with, with the activities, you know, that you see while we were loading, would change. When we, our initial offer was in the neighborhood of three hundred thousand an acre, which is consistent with, with property being sold for retail uses in the area was, had been generating. However, this is the first property that was appraised for industrial uses under the I-1 zoning that we pursued, pursued for the park. Came in at a much lower number. But what helped is we called it up a break because in the meantime, the developer's program was changing. And so from a program needing fourteen and a half acres, or six acres for forty-five thousand square feet, we saw his need grow to fourteen acres with a hundred thirty-five thousand square feet of proposed construction now. Still ten thousand square feet for, for his use, but he's been able to basically determine that there's, that there is demand for an additional one hundred twenty-five thousand square feet at minimum of use. And so we, we used that to basically say, we, we had an offer that you all had approved for the six acres. We did the math and we said, okay, and he just said, so for that same amount of money, you know, how many acres can I buy on the appraised value because I now need it? And that's what we've done here. We've amended this to, so fourteen point four, that is, that's what that offer spread out to. It actually works out nicely because that is fourteen and a half is the minimum amount of acreage that will deliver this, deliver this function with parking and the parking, the parking intensity that some of his medical office users will be asking for. This is, this parcel is not to scale. That's, so you'll see six acres there. That six acres really is closer to, to eight. But basically to get to fourteen and a half, we're just gonna bring this down and he'll take the corner as well.
Is that green area also part of the park or is it just the blue?
Yes, sir, this is a, so this is phase one of our park. This is, this is what's under construction today. This is the road that we're building at present. So this road is scheduled to terminate here. And then this is the BMP that we're building to carry this first sort of fifty-eight acres of the park. We, this deal is exciting enough to us. We think it probably advances our need to go ahead and work on the next phase of the road, which would get us here and add this BMP. Also, we're starting to see, given the wetland impact here, we may wanna look at the southern end of the park as well because there's some smaller parcels there that, that work for development. We'll talk to you about that in a little bit.
So the green area is not developed?
It's not developed yet. We've got, so there's heavy wetland impact here on, on Princess Anne Road that's gotta be dealt with.
That can be mitigated or not?
We think so.
Reason I'm asking is it looks like you're giving them the whole, that's acreage in the park there with the frontage. But I guess if you can develop the rest of that, there's other acreage on, on the main road.
So, so we believe that this can be mitigated, it will require time though.
I looked at a large parcel.
What's that?
Wildlands, a lot of, lot of space.
Lot of land, right?
I bet that's fifty acres.
And, and,
Can't use it.
So if, if you would, let me, let me jump down the, the agenda a little. Let me hold this conversation till we're down the agenda a little bit because I think we can share some things with you that will, that will answer some of these questions. But as it relates to this, it's, again, it's a hundred thirty-five thousand square foot office expansion in, in our community that is still moving forward. Talked to the developers recently as yesterday. And so we, we think this is a, I think this is a great use. We do, we do anticipate that there will be a medical office component to it. Here's a, here's a potential rendering about regarding what the first building would look like. And these are just, again, more of that.
Which portion will be visible from the road?
So he'll have, let me go back to that slide. He'll have, he'll likely have two buildings on the frontage. And we have impressed upon him the need to have a facade on both sides of that, obviously. But, so we think that, that there are five buildings working around centralized parking. And so we think that they're, and again, I'm not his engineer and don't wanna pretend to be, but, but on some conceptual stuff that we have seen, we anticipate that we're probably looking at five buildings and that we'll see two on the frontage, one in the bend here, and then on, on the edge of the property next to this easement. So with sharing a parking field in between. We think, we think that's the most efficient way to develop it, but that's really between him and his development team to, to come to. But we've seen a schematic that suggests that, that's what we're likely to get.
And they know whatever spacing Princess Anne has to,
Absolutely.
Is all of the green also zoned I-1 or is it just the blue?
Yes, so everything in the park is zoned I-1, which is important because it's, we have so little industrially zoned real estate that if we're gonna, if we're doing projects like this, I mean, this is almost the only place we have for them to go. Particularly when you think about the way that digital infrastructure is now starting to, to come together in corporate landing. It's, with more cables coming as we speak, we think it's, we think it's important to, to just recognize we have two, two industrially zoned parts of the city, corporate landing and, and this parcel here. And so it's really all we got, which is why we need to mitigate the wetland.
Any, any other questions for Taylor?
So is he buying fourteen acres or six acres?
Fourteen and a half acres. Is, is, the original request was for cities. It's, it's fourteen and a half to accommodate the hundred thirty-five thousand square feet and parking.
And the purchase price stays the same?
Purchase price is the same, it's still one million. Which, and that's right, it's, it's, he's buying it for the appraised value.
No further questions, the chair will entertain a motion to request approval of modification of the terms of sale to Why Not Pizza. Looks like we have a motion for Mr. Standing, do we have a second?
Second.
Second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, same sign. That motion carries. Next, we've got our Economic Development Investment Program, EDIP program items.
I'm, I'm, I'll move through this quickly. Again, the, always excited, again, always excited when local companies are growing. Here's a quick history on Valkyrie Enterprises. And now I'll jump forward to the disclosures, give you all a moment to read those. Basically, this is a company that provides technical services, support engineering in the defense industry. Currently located on corporate, on Corporation Lane and are, have a planned expansion to Guardian Lane. They, they're looking at leasing sixty-six thousand square feet. They had a hundred thousand dollar EDIP in 2015 that they satisfied two years ago. They currently have two hundred two employees in Virginia Beach. And this expansion contemplates the creation of an additional one hundred FTEs. So we're over the, a hundred FTEs over the next thirty-six months in project management, engineering, basically in the high wage, technically based fields that you all, you all have asked us to focus on. So we're very excited about this creation of jobs in our community. Important to know, we're, we, these are high paying jobs as well with an average salary across the hundred FTEs of eighty-six thousand dollars per year, net of, of sort of any employee benefits, true salaries. There is some capital investment, six hundred seventy-five thousand dollars, but again, so a six hundred thousand, seventy-five thousand dollar capital investment under the new, under the new EDIP principles that you all adapt, adopted last year would not, would not justify a large investment. But the creation of a hundred high paying jobs do. And so, and so we are, we are requesting an EDIP Part A for a hundred twenty-five thousand dollars based on the creation of a hundred FTEs at an average of seventy-five thousand per job. Why seventy-five thousand? That's our, we don't have an eighty-five to a hundred range, seventy-five is our highest range. So we're, we'll ask them to do that. I mean, important to know, mean wages in the Commonwealth of Virginia are just less than forty-two thousand dollars. So average wages of seventy-two thousand is a good win for us. And, and this is, their corporate headquarters is here in Virginia Beach. And they're part of another one of the pillars of our local economy that, we would, with that, we would, happy to take your questions, but would ask for your support.
And there, I, I think I saw in one of your slides, their 2015 EDIP grant has been satisfied.
Fully satisfied. Closed out, and this is,
It'll be brand new.
And so, yeah, this, this is a great local company that is continuing to grow and expand in our, and, and choosing to make Virginia Beach their home. So we're, we're very excited about this one.
Any questions for Taylor?
Yeah, Taylor, bring us ten more like these.
Yeah. We're on it.
Please, right? I think we're gonna need them.
That's right.
Did you have a question? Any other questions? All right, the chair will entertain a motion to approve a resolution authorizing an EDIP award, a hundred and twenty-five thousand under Part A for Valkyrie Enterprises.
Move.
All right, we've got a motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, aye. All opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Do you have another one of these for us, Taylor?
So I got a, I got an EDIP program, and I actually do have another one of these for you, which is, which is, uh, so today, we're doing, we're doing it two ways. We're, we're bringing you a bunch of jobs in one, and we're gonna bring you a ton of cash in the other. And so that's, that makes for a good meeting, right?
It's a good one, it's able.
Maybe you can double our pay for the,
So, and, and Madam Chair, if you want, I'm, I'm happy to go ahead and do the other EDIP request, or we can do EDIP Part E, it's whatever you prefer.
Why don't, why don't we go ahead and do, I, I know you're all teed up, but why don't you, why don't we go ahead and do the EDIP request under the current program and then we can spend a little bit of time on the new Part E program?
Absolutely. And if I can, while I'm,
There you go, that was quick.
While this one's coming up, I do wanna recognize Ray White and his team, who worked both Valkyrie and, and this project. Ray and Charlie have done a great job pulling these together. Quickly though, so let me, so this is an award that you all, you all have already made, and we're asking for a modification. I'll talk about that in just a minute. But here is, I'll let you all read their disclosures and then we'll dive in. One more set. Okay. So I won't read all this to you, but you all will remember, Assured Communication Advisors International was looking at, basically was, was looking at property in corporate landing. We had, we hadn't agreed upon, sales agreement with them. That, and, and the EDIP that we're talking about extending was part of that, was, was part of that sales agreement. They terminated that real estate acquisition, I suppose, was it a year ago, six months ago, something like that? When they terminated the, the real estate, basically their real estate option, they, because your EDIP was tied to it, it potentially terminated as well. However, without, as you can see, this is big company, clients all over the world, a ton of experience. Basically, looking, believes, I will tell you, so I wanna say for Joel Orkin, who's the CEO of this company, he believes in Virginia Beach and has actually been, as you all know, we've had some less than, I would tell you, less than advantageous conversation coming out of some of our partners in the region talking about basically that, that data infrastructure would not grow up here because of, because of hurricane impact and flooding, things of that nature. Joel was actually, Joel was actually a critical piece of, of helping us combat that narrative and put it that, so that we now have opportunity going forward, so. We're talking about a CEO here that believes in our country, that believes in our city, and has now brought us this project. Looking at, looking at a piece of property on the, on the Taylor Farm off of, basically Dam Neck and Harper's. We'll show you that in just a moment. It's a fairly large parcel. And this is, his land purchase originally in corporate, corporate landing was ten acres at two hundred thousand, about two million with a promise of a hundred and thirty thousand square feet. Only thirty FTEs, as we know, data centers bring a ton of capital investment, they just don't create a lot of jobs. So we've now moved Taylor Farms, intersection of Dam Neck and Harper's. We, the size of the project has increased to just over twenty-two acres. He's got, he's got a deal of a hundred thousand an acre total. So first building here at a hundred thirty thousand square feet, which again, a nice addition, still the thirty FTEs. What's great, anticipated completion in the first quarter of twenty-two. So not that far away. This is the parcel that we're looking at. This is a site rendering. This is a sort of a look from the top.
Looks like a Greyhound bus station.
It does, doesn't it?
Taylor, why are they going to private property as opposed to corporate landing? Why the, because they needed more space or?
I don't know the answer to that. I, I would assume that it's because they need, they need additional space or further expansions. And, I mean, it's just important for us to know, I mean, it's half the price. You know, in the, I, I really do think it's that simple. It's, it's a hundred thousand an acre versus a minimum of two hundred. Now, the other, important to know about this property, at that corner of Dam Neck and Harper's, you very quickly get into the most restrictive Navy easements, which, which has a real impact on value. I'm not, I'm not for a minute suggesting that we, that we're pricing our real estate too high in corporate landing. The thing for this though, is, and it's one of our new principles in the office, if it, if it's something that we can cite in a Navy easement, it goes there as a first priority because we wanna preserve our unencumbered real estate for uses that are a little more challenging. So it's important to know, data centers, because of the low FTE count, are one of the few users that we can cite in areas where there's, where there's heavy Navy impact. So I've not, I've not overlaid this project specifically, but, but I know when you, when you come north off of Dam Neck, you get into, you get into those, those easements pretty quickly.
And is the property already zoned or is it still ag?
This one, I believe, we have done some rezoning in that area for, for next minute. I do not know, I should know that, I apologize. I do not know specifically if zoning is required for this project. And the reason we didn't, we didn't go that far with this one is because he's asking, he's not asking for an extension of the deadline. He's just asking for the time he had remaining on his initial EDIP clock. He's asked for,
We're extending, we're extending it to June of twenty-two.
June of twenty-two, but still, I mean, as we're here, as we're here in, in May of twenty, he can finish it in two years. So long as, so long as he, he finishes it within his clock, I mean, basically, we, we would not grant an extension for, for the zoning issue. We, we're putting in, you got two years to get it done.
Okay.
That's the request at least.
He's just asking for a little more time at this?
That's right, he's asking you to, to basically reauthorize the deal that terminated and then give him till June of twenty-two to finish it. And that's, and the reason, important to know, obviously, landing of subsea cables are an important part of what he's doing. And so he doesn't, you anticipate that there'll be cables that, land at this, this is the reason that we support this one. 46.8 million in construction, just over, just less than 3 million for real estate, a million dollars worth of personal property that'll be in there, and 1.5 million versus worth of computer property. Now, you all know, this is a data center, so we anticipate, this is between him and the Commissioner, of course, but we anticipate that this qualifies for the rapid depreciation schedules that were approved for, you know, for data centers for the computer equipment, so we separate that in the capital investment, because it, because again, it's almost fully depreciates, I think, in two years. And so, but total investment in our community is, was 52 and a half, or 52 million. Here's the award that was approved, the half million, you know, basically, $1 for the 25 or more. Here's the new program, construction of 20, just less than 25 million, Phase II construction of 33 million, real estate of 2.1 million, same personal property of a million, and then computer equipment of 1.5 million. So we're now looking at a proposed total investment in our community, just less than 62 million by June of '22. So, so we like this project for that, for that reason.
So they'll build Phase 1 and 2 by then?
That is what, that's what we believe, but, but what I'll tell you is, if we can just, he would qualify with just, just Phase 1, but yeah, I mean, our goal is to get 1 and 2 through.
And how does he tie into the undersea cables? Does he have to go through our approved?
So he will not be in corporate landing now, so, so no, he would not necessarily be mandated to use our conduit management system. And as I understand his plan, this is where I don't want to get ahead of his development plan, but I think there may be a cable landing at his location, so, but I don't want, but I don't want to definitively say that without him being here to.
So he's looking potentially at a separate undersea cable coming to the Taylor Farms location? And he'd have to get the easements and everything.
Right, they would have to, I mean, so whatever they're bringing to the site, they'll have to negotiate with our right of way folks, separate from us. But, but like I say, we see, we see a $62 million investment, we think this is a great addition to the tax base, and we ask for your support.
Just a off question, the different cables that are coming from that area, are they, do they not plan on work, no use of working together?
So.
Or is that impossible because of the.
So, so, so no, I think that there is, there is quite a bit of collaboration going on within the park, especially now that we have our meet me room up and running at Global Links, and they're pulling customers in. So we see that there are users for our conduit management system, the cables that land at Telsias run to the, run to the meet me room at Global Links, so yeah, that's happening, but, but also, I don't, I don't, I don't want to run from the fact that these, that these data, many of these data center providers are competitors.
I think the real concern that we had, you were talking about the chatter about hurricanes, concern that we had is, I think it's Henrico County, there's a group that's making a push to get basically service from our undersea cables to Henrico County, completely bypassing Hampton Road, so they want to set up their own group of data centers.
That's right, so this is something that we did not know, because we never landed a cable here before, so this is not a criticism, either, we just didn't know. We landed these cables, and basically, it's like having, it's like having an interstate highway run right through our town, but we didn't have an off ramp.
Right.
The Carrier Neutral Hotel and the Meet Me Room created the off ramp. Henrico, good on them, got a jump on us because these cables can only, you can only run this signal so long before you have to have a regeneration point. Richmond was the natural regeneration point, and so they, it was a great way to offload signal, and they did, and so, I mean, that's just, that's business and competition, we've, and so we're not, you know. The thing that was challenging for us was there was a narrative, as we were bringing our Carrier Neutral Hotel and Meet Me Room online, that the infrastructure couldn't be used here, that was the narrative we had to combat, and we're seeing with projects like this, that we're right, we can absolutely deliver this function here. And what this is, it's digital infrastructure, it's, it basically is, it's, it's like, it's like water and sewer and roadways, having this here gives us the ability to be more, to be a more attractive location for other technology users that need to be close to that signal. So this is, so this is a big next step for us.
So they offer infrastructure to support the cable?
Yes, sir.
Any other questions for Taylor?
Taylor, is this the company? I can just hear you, I don't know what you're talking about.
She hit the wrong button.
Dot, we can't hear you anymore.
So, so this is, but I think I know, this is Joel Orgeron at ACA International, Joel, we were dealing with Joel and, you know, two to three years ago, and it is a, it is a project that the authority has seen before, this is just a larger one.
So for ACA, by going to, going outside of corporate landing, they don't have to deal with Global Links now?
I think that's right. I think that's right.
Dot, are you still there?
She's calling.
I'll move it.
All right, so we've got a motion to approve the modification of the EDIP award to Assured Communications Advisors, do we have a second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign?
Thank you for that, that was, that was an integral step in, in him, basically, his, his investors were, were looking for our support of this project, and so this, so thank you, this, this one actually makes a big difference. All right.
I think we have a technology issue, hold on for just a second.
Sure.
Do we have to get Dot and Nekka back on, or?
Is it Dot?
Is Nekka, are you still there?
You know what you could do? Call one on that, and then call the other on the other, and that way you just have them on two separate phones. We still have one up here. So let's call Dot on that other thing that I showed you earlier.
So we just approved a global landing station, but can't connect two phones.
Ah, the irony.
Yep.
Yeah, I'm just glad I learned how to host a meeting on Zoom.
Hello, sorry to miss your call.
Is Nekka still there? We hear leaving Dot a voicemail now.
This next one's important, so we'll try to get both of them back online.
Should I hang up and try again?
I would.
We have a quorum here?
We do, in the room, the bi-phone people don't count for quorum, they can't vote.
So, if you want, well, I can quickly move on to, we have two fairly easy items for, they're the same item for Virginia, for Virginia Beach National and.
Forty facilities.
Live Nation. Shall I do that one?
Yeah, let's go ahead and jump to those.
These are fairly straightforward, basically, it's COVID-19 has had a real impact on Operation Citywide, Live Nation has not been able to host an event, and where Virginia Beach National, the actual golf course is quite healthy as it relates to the number of rounds that they're seeing, their food service provider has not been able, to whom they, who pays us rent, has not been able to basically operate, so they've been in a.
Send a message, press 3.
Because.
If you need something else, press.
Because of, like so many restaurants, they were, are food service providers, they've been impacted by the executive order, so I think they're selling cold food, but they're not really able to provide service. And so they're just, Virginia Beach National is asking us to, to basically allow them to forgive the rent of their food service provider during this crisis, so that they can just maintain what has been a good partner for them, and Live Nation is asking for, for similar relief for the same reason, and we think this is reasonable, these are, these are great partners for ours, we want, these are great partners of ours, we want them to be successful, and so we would ask that you, that you approve their requested relief just through the end of this, this crisis.
So for Virginia Beach Golf, we're getting some component of rent, they're just asking for us to abate the rent for the.
For the food service. Okay, that's right.
So what percentage is that of the overall rent?
It's minimal, it's, I'd have to pull up, pull up the letter to show you, but I mean, it's, that's right, it's, it's, it's very small.
Define until COVID, define the, define the termination.
Such time that the manager, that the local emergency is lifted.
That's right.
Why don't we, Live Nation, that's not, that's not.
Yeah, let's deal with the golf course first, I think.
Yeah, so for the golf course, we're just asking for relief till we, till basically they can reopen, so, so when, when the emergency is lifted, and they can, they can reopen and start selling food again, then we would, then we would think that their, their need would be expired at that.
And again, it's just rent abatement for the food piece of it, not.
Food service provider, that is correct.
Right.
I hate to be particular, but open inside, outside, 50%, 100%? What is the.
So, since it's a golf course, I think we get, I think if we get, we get to 50%, I mean, they're at a point where they can, perhaps, I mean, they should be able to operate it, I mean, but, but.
Phase 2 could change, though, we don't.
That's my, that's the thing, I mean, phase, and when is Phase 2, I don't know, I mean, so for me.
I think 50% indoor, because I don't think they're lined up out the door there, so 50% indoors probably, and I think there's a lot of business out there as soon as they can open, but they're gonna be able to open Friday outdoors.
That's right, and so, and so this is, we basically, I think we're giving the last two months of rent, and then until they can get to 50% is what the request would be.
We're putting a time constraint on this, like approve it now through the end of May or the end of June, and to be reviewed again, or.
End of June gets to the end of the fiscal year, that works for me.
I'd say in the June, I would keep a break, trust me, they're hurting.
Why wouldn't they just qualify under this, the CDIP then?
So they would, they would qualify, and, and that's, and that's something we could pursue.
They got the money there, we have to pay him.
Yeah, I don't think they can double do.
No, they can't have both.
They can't, but I think it's easier, if somebody is paying rent to the authority, I think it's easier for us to abate rent in those situations, they can't then qualify for Part E, it's easy, it's easier for us to do the rent abatement, I think.
That's fair.
Yeah.
So I'll move that we, we abate the rent through the end of the fiscal year, June 30th, to be reviewed after that.
But not to be able to qualify for.
EDIP, yeah.
EDIP grant.
The Part E. All right, so we've got a motion, and, like, was that a second? In the second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign? Motion carries, so then the next one we have to deal with is Live Nation.
That is a more serious issue. I mean, they, they're not in a position where they can have an event for a while, but they are a great partner for us, they have done an amazing job managing our asset, it is, they have, their, their rent incentive checks have, have been coming steady, and I mean, and again, they've been a willing participant, participant in all of the renovations and expansion that we've done there, and it's in a great, it's a great event venue.
And we just funded some additional.
We did.
Right?
We did, and so, again, Alex, do we know how long they need relief?
They asked for, just for three months.
Just for three months.
Did Live Nation qualify for any of the PPP?
Locally, I don't believe so. They've not been.
Not at all. My knowledge, not at all, because their company's so big, they can't.
But they took each one, like a lot of those big companies do.
It's important to note, they asked for this, they asked for this relief a few weeks ago, before we knew they were gonna. Mr. Standings' point is right on, I don't know that three months has them at a place where they're, they're hosting events again. Certainly, certainly, we know that a 200-person event doesn't help them, right? And so, so I do think, I don't know if this is possible, we fully support the request for the three months, but we would entertain the ability, if you all were willing to give it to us, to either come back with a subsequent request, or even at the staff level, to amend that request with your approval, we'd prefer to bring it back to you, but, but I just, I just want to be, want to be as transparent as possible, we may need more than three months here.
That's understood.
I would, I would suggest that, no question, unfortunately, but I would suggest that they come back with a proposal.
Great idea.
And have a couple options based on what their foreseeable future is with it, because the fact of the matter is, it ain't gonna be a full while.
What do they pay monthly in rent? 10,000, and they pay it throughout the year, even though, even when they're not open, right? So, from their budget perspective, even though they pay it monthly, they're, I mean, this is supposed to be their busy season, this is when they make all their revenue.
When they make it, that's right.
When does their season end? Does it end October?
Yeah, generally, it's, yeah, I mean, I think they have a few October shows, but, but I think the, the big ones are generally Labor Day.
May through August.
But they could, they could go longer, it's just a question of anybody touring outside, and then you hear the weather.
And have they had all of their acts canceled, or is it just?
We believe so, I do, this is where I gotta tell you, I do not know the status of any contracts that they have that go beyond the end of, of this executive order, or the, basically lifting the, either the local or, or state emergency, but certainly, everything up to that point has been canceled.
I'll move the three-month requested abatement.
Question before we step on that, real quick. One, just an observation or comment, that the relief coming from the federal government continues to evolve, we, we see new rules coming, are continually, also, we expect that there's going to be additional steps, whether those steps are, as some would like to be this week, and others suggesting at the end of June, there are going to be additional steps, and I would like to emphasize that they should continue to pursue any other relief that would provide rent relief, and not simply fall back on the fact that this has been abated, therefore, they have no obligation to pursue federal relief of some sort, so I'd like to make sure that we emphasize that in some way.
Exhaust all efforts.
Whatever that language be, I think we need to do that. The second question is, as we do go through, and I don't know what this looks like, very few people do, but whatever this phased opening of different opportunities looks like, are there, while, while the concert series may be sidelined, are there other opportunities for use of that facility over the course of the summer? I'd hate for it to sit completely empty, unused, even if it's outdoor church service on Sunday, some other type of use of that facility that would meet the criteria, would the city or the development authority have the ability to use it for that purpose, or is it exclusive to, to, to Live Nation?
The authority has the ability to use the building for, I think it's limited to municipal purposes, a certain number of times per year, and then we just have to pay for any employees that Live Nation provides.
To your point, I think they need to come, it'd be a good idea for them to come to us.
Come with a plan.
Provide options, plans, alternative revenue sources, potential government relief, what, however they, wherever we can generate revenue.
They owe us an annual report anyway, we just haven't been able to bring them in because we're, because of the crisis, so we can, we can work towards that.
It's a big facility where you can socially distance with a cover, and the opportunity to gather people in a way that you may not be able to elsewhere.
Except you can't have gatherings of more than 50 in Phase 2.
Yeah, I don't know.
Half of your outdoor, but they are outdoor.
Is it a complete abatement, or is it?
You can have half of it, 50 people gathering.
Is it complete abatement, or is it tied onto the back end?
I don't know the answer.
Completely?
Well. Everybody, everybody's adding to the end.
Yeah.
But in some cases, it doesn't really mean a whole lot, because if they're staying anyways, or you're renegotiating a contract, it's irrelevant.
Cutting into next year.
It just sounds good, you know?
Those are my two comments, that's all I have.
Yeah, I just, I don't think they're gonna have it, I mean, I think we're all lucky if they can get running in. I mean, I, I think we're all lucky if they can get running in July, but probably August. And, you know, the question is, is it gonna be touring and are people comfortable enough to go to events, so.
Right now concerts are even canceling into next year. I can just tell you that, what's going on. It's a pretty serious situation.
Alright, so I, the motion was for rent abatement for the three months and then for them to come back to us with a plan that would include whether or not they can get other forms of, uh, of funding from the federal government.
Second.
Okay, we've got a motion in a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Do we have our phone or Dot and Naka on the phone?
I couldn't get her because she, she wanted a voicemail.
Okay. Dot, are you there? Doesn't sound like there's anybody.
I do, but I get cut off.
Yep. Okay, wait, we heard you.
I said every time I say something, I get cut off. The phone goes dead. So is it dead now?
Yep, we can hear you.
You're hitting the wrong buttons.
I didn't hear what you were saying, it was very, Naka, are you still there? She's not.
I think we lost.
Whatever, we can't hear you all very well, but I, I get a few words.
Let's try to be louder. Alright, we're moving on to the request, uh, for approval of the, uh, Small Business Emergency Assistance, which is the new part E.
That's right.
Program under our EDIP program.
And so what I'll show you here is, this is, this is our new policy document that's been approved by city council. Um, and I'll run through a couple of points here, but just to give you all in advance on what we're asking for here. City council has, uh, created part E and given us approval to use 1.5 million of our, uh, EDIP funds that are, that are available. Um, for small business assistance to assist with the local emergency. Um, we have their policy statement. We're now coming to you and asking, um, for procedural guidance on how you would like us to administer this portion of the program.
So to be technically correct, they've allowed us to use 1.5 million dollars of our budget for this new program, which they've given us guidelines for. We still need to, Alex, I'm looking at you. We still need to approve because this is our policy.
That's right.
We need to approve the policy. But as far as the qualifications, we're limited to what, what they've indicated, the businesses, how they would need to qualify for this.
That's right. They've given us a box. We can, as long as we're within that box, we'll, we can, we can operate wherever, we can go wherever you send us. But, but basically they've drawn the, they've sort of drawn the meets and bounds of where we will, we will operate. Um, and so just to run through that, uh, qualifying business, uh, has fewer than 250 employees, has operated in the city for at least one year or 12 months, um, continues to operate during the local emergency or was ordered closed by one of the executive orders. We thought that was an important distinction to make. There are plenty of businesses that, that would have operated but could not. That they have been affected by the, uh, by the pandemic and it has caused disruption to their, to their revenues of the business so that the business is unable to continue generating sufficient revenue to make rents, uh, utility payments or to meet its other obligations without reducing its number of employees. That's important. Uh, the, uh, the business is operated in a lease space and the landlord's not related to the entity, um, uh, is not a related entity to the owner or owners of the business and the business agreed that it will force all, any reduction in its workforce during the grant period is defined in section three. What's the grant period? As we get to section three, you'll see that, that this, that the, this is the, these grants are for the lesser of actual losses or $10,000. When we looked at the rent piece, we were talking about, we had to hem that in, so we said two months rent. So the grant period, two months. That's, that's the definition there that we've, that we've worked through. There's the 1.5 million that we mentioned and there's section three. There's an app, we have been accepting applications here and, uh, and I'll show you that application in just a moment. From there, we get into, to just, to additional, uh, criteria, uh, and the selection process. But what I want to talk about is, um, what council has basically said to us through their policy, their policy approval is, um, prior to the approval of a grant, the authority shall make the finding that the application, the applicant qualifies, the animating purpose of the proposed provision of EDIP funds for the grant is the public purpose of promoting economic development and retaining business, that the expenditure of such funds will only incidentally inure to, uh, private interests. The proposed provision of funds for the grants and the purgance of the purposes for which our authority was created. That without the grant, it's unlikely the applicant would be able to continue its operation in the city at its current level. And then finally, that the continued operation of the business will be beneficial to the recovery of the local economy. So basically this is, this is fairly straightforward stuff, but as we're talking about new public policy, I thought it was great, I thought it was important that, that the public here, that, uh, everything we are doing here is to protect our existing business community to con, to continue with your longstanding precedent of investing in our local business community to ensure that our community continues to grow. And so all of that is contained here. I'll jump over to the application quickly just so that you all can see what we've been, what we've been looking for. This application comes straight from the policy and I want to jump down to, to this section here before we start talking about evaluation. This is, um, these are the pieces that we require to cut, to have what we call a complete application. One is you gotta fill out the form. Two, we want each business to give us a statement describing how the local impact, the local emergency has impacted them. We think that's important to document all of the ways, on the, on the backend of this thing, it's gonna be important to know how people have been affected specifically because there's no way, everybody's business is a little different, there's no way that we can guess on all of it. And so we're seeing this fairly broad. Due to local business, business, uh, they have to confirm to us that due to the local emergency, they can't generate sufficient revenue to, uh, to cover whatever obligation they are asking for relief on. That the receipt of the grant will allow the business to continue, uh, operation and force all any reduction in employees. We think that's important. You can't come to us, get a $10,000 grant and then lay off your employees. We thought that was an important provision to, uh, to leave, having the, uh, in the process. Um, yeah, the, the landlord has agreed to waive all the fees. We think this is important to, so here's the thing, what we can't have is, we can't get, if somebody's already six months behind on their rent, we can't give you two months rent and then you're just four months behind. We, we think it's important that we know that, uh, that the business is close, is close enough to current on their obligations, that the landlord is waiving fees. We feel that's an important threshold to meet in knowing that this business can continue to operate in our community after the fact. That there's a valid lease in place and that the, and, and here's something else, the applicant shall provide a copy of the current lease or other written and binding obligation which the business seeks assistance. We think that's important to know as well. That's, that's also important for us from a qualification standpoint because the lease allows us to, to, that is the best verification point that we can come, come up with to know what somebody's paying for rent. So, you know, so what we don't want is a situation where somebody comes in and says, well, my rent's $5,000 a month, gets 10 grand where the rent's really $500 a month. So the lease is an important piece or some, some documentation that provides us a quantifiable number for rent to know that we're, that we're not funding at a higher amount than we should. Something else that we have done, uh, uh, through, through conversations with the officers of the authority, um, we have, uh, we have taken additional steps. We're working with the commissioner of the revenues, uh, office, they've been a great partner for us in this space. We have received just less than three, as of the close of business yesterday, we received just less than 370 applications for this program. Um, so, so we, so there is a strong need for, uh, now, we know that not all of those are complete applications, we know that not all of those will qualify, but it's important that there are 370 business owners in our community that are asking for this assistance. We're working with the commissioner of revenue now, we've sent them a complete list of everyone that we've received and they are going through that list to, uh, to confirm that there are business licenses in place for every one of those. That also gives us a great validation point. And, you know, we're, we're not gonna go business by business. It also, it also gives us the ability to do a better job of quantifying actual, actual losses. So, um, so we think that's an important piece as well. Yes, sir.
I apologize, I have a 10 o'clock Zoom on New Life that I have to do. But I, I do have a quick, first, I want to thank you all in your department for recognizing the need for this because obviously we could bring in all the business we, and we can try to do, but if we don't save and salvage what we have, I think this is one of the most serious things that we need to, to address, um, not just in this meeting, but maybe a subsequent, before the end of the, before the next month meeting. And, um, because just to try to quantify, the need is, is going to be significant. And after a while, the city council may get sick of dribbling out a million here and a million there. It's gonna take a significant amount more money, I think. The, uh, it's a very complicated issue. We've seen two people apply today for Live Nation and, and another, and they're just, they're, they're two of, of really thousands. And, um, is there a process that you all have to, that you have to try to kind of look at the scope of the need or these applications your indicator? So maybe as you go through the applications, you can, you all will see it more. What I'm afraid of, um, and I'm very certain, um, that these issues are gonna get worse and worse and worse in the next six months. And I can speak for the hospitality industry on how severe it is. And it's, it's no secret what it is, um, but we cannot lose these small businesses. And one other comment, um, in this, and I know I spoke to you, but I didn't see anywhere for, for people who own their property. Is there, does it says just for tenants?
Just can't get rent assistance.
You can't, but they can get assistance, but not rent assistance.
Employees, yes, sir.
Okay.
And other obligations.
Other obligations, is that right? But here's the thing, if you, if you, if you own the business, basically, so, uh, what this does not allow us to do is provide, provide rent assistance to owners of buildings or as an extension, mortgage support, but there are other expenses that could be paid.
Right. But, but again, I would follow, thank you very, very much. And I, it's, I think we need to get on this before the next month because it has to do with city funding.
Sure.
It's to do with everything.
So, so thank you for that. And, and, and to your point, this is really the one opportunity that our, that this authority will likely have to, uh, to make significant contributions to, um, particularly general retail uses. If you all know, our authority is built around industrial uses, manufacturing, commercial uses, office users. We're not really, um, our procedurally, we're not built to invest in, uh, in retail. But to your point, it is very much needed right now and this is an opportunity for us to support that portion of our economy and we think it's very important. There, here is our request and then before I walk through this, we, um, it is, as you all know, we have a meeting on the 19th, it's our regular meeting. Um, I have eight members of my staff that are standing by, that coming out of this meeting today, whatever procedures are adopted, we're gonna go from basically, start from can to can't every day, um, with the goal to have all of our completed applications reviewed by the close of business Friday so that we can present them to you on Tuesday. We have, nothing like a deadline, right? We have, we have never, we have never moved.
I love deadlines.
I do too.
All hands on.
So, so here's the thing, we have never, um, I will admit, uh, and, and thank you to those of you who helped us with the application. You know, I stood in front of council two weeks ago and said, we're gonna get this application on the street by the close of business on Friday. Was it perfect? No, but it was out. And so, um, the next deadline for my team is we're gonna work until we're done on Friday. And then the idea is we want to come back to you on Tuesday with a, with a, basically a docket of grants to approve that we have validated and the goal is to start cutting checks immediately. Because, because to your point, the need out there is real and it is dire and people are going out of business real time right now. So we, I gotta get this money out the door. So my request is, one, a pretty simple evaluation. Um, and we've built a draft of one here and we would, we'll tell, whatever thoughts you can give us, we appreciate. There's one that I've already gotten and I'll show you. This is, this is the original draft that I built around the comments from council. It is not perfect and I know it's not perfect and, and there's probably ways to simplify this. But, um, these are the statements at the top. These pass fail criteria, this is what constitutes a complete application.
Can you make your screen a little larger, please? Zoom that.
You got that? Thank you. So, and that's why we're calling this pre-screen and it's just the things I talked about. Have we got a statement of impact? Have you verified that the losses are attributable to the emergency? You got a valid lease for us? Landlord agreement to waive your fees? I mean, all of those things. These are just straight pass fail criteria. That's it. And that's what, that was what specified in council's policy. Here, um, and, and if you get an X on all these boxes, you have passed, you have a complete application. Um, operation for more than 12 months, we'll have that in the lease, um, or the business license, which is being validated now. Number of employees, this, this is not a scored bucket. We just think it's gonna be really important on the back end of this to be able to provide information to you all of what we saw in the pool. So how many businesses with less than 50 employees got benefit versus how many businesses with between 150 and 250 got benefits? So, so this is just for our internal track.
Excuse me a second, is there any action we need to take on this? Cause I have to leave at 10 too. Vote on this or what?
We need to vote on this.
Yeah.
So, so here's the thing, if.
What do you honestly vote on?
So the one thing that I would tell you is, um, we can run with this. Um, there's been some pushback on scoring taxes as high as we have. I'm happy to delete that. If, if that satisfies the authority, I can delete that piece. We've got the commissioner of revenue piece coming through. If you'll approve that, I can go.
Alright, question, you, I didn't see on your pass fail disclosure, we can't approve any.
Oh yeah, sorry, yeah. Disclosure is obviously a hard requirement before it comes to this body, so we'll have completed disclosures on everybody. That, cause that's generally the.
Yeah, just so everybody knows, the, um, criteria from council required that the, um, entity, the landlord entity not be a related entity. So we're using the, the definition from the disclosure, so parent, subsidiary, affiliate, all of that. So we know what the relationship is there. We've kind of looked at this, we've asked to make sure that we know the location of the business, so all the money is not going to one part of the city versus the other part of the city. Um, the landlord has to be willing and, and we need to know that the business is a viable business. So if they're already six months behind in their rent, that's, that's not a safe bet. They were on life support at a time when the economy was doing well. So we're trying to, I mean, we've got way more requests than we have funding, even if we get an extra million dollars. So we're really trying to make sure that the money's going where it needs to go. The other piece of this is, if they already get, got PPE dollars or CARES Act or if they got funding from someplace else, they become a lower priority for us because we want to make sure we're getting the money to the businesses that have no other way to get relief and that this is really gonna be impactful for them. So those are kind of the, the four policy pieces that Bill and Dot and I were looking at, making sure there's plenty of businesses in this city that can't get money from any other source and, and we're their lifeline. So we need to.
One of the things we've thought about.
What we need to approve?
Just use of, of this procedural draft that's in front of you. One thing I would say on this.
Taxes, I can't do taxes.
I might just either, either pull that out or just make all of these.
Take money from the city to be done. Pay taxes back to the city.
Yeah.
So how does a person prove that they can't stay in business without this money? I don't.
I mean, they're gonna have to give us a written statement and sign the bottom of it. I mean, there's a point. of it, I mean, there's a point of.
I don't need to what?
They're certifying that they're not making this up, and if we find out that they lied, then that's a serious.
Yeah, and I just asked a couple of things that I heard. Number one, and I know it's hard to be a perfect scenario, it's very difficult, we see in the federal government, but number one, I heard if they haven't gotten PPP, you know, why didn't they, why didn't they get out there and do it like everyone else?
Lots of reasons.
Yeah, and I'm sure there are, so those reasons need to be, you know.
There's a blank on it, so when we worked on the application, we asked for information as.
For all uses.
Whether or not they qualified, whether or not they put in, whether or not they got something.
And then I heard, it depends what area, I don't know how you qualify that, because one person could have lesser need, but you have an area that has more people, I wouldn't want to see that way too much, because needs a need, doesn't matter where you are.
Well, I say here, you could go up to 250 employees, okay? 250 employees, and you get $10,000 bucks, puts you out of business, you got a problem. I've been in business for 45 years, and I'm looking at all of this criteria, right?
But you got to start somewhere.
One quick thing to mention, because I didn't talk about it, we have provide, provided points based on what economic data from the Commonwealth is showing as it relates to industrial sectors that are most impacted. So, we see that retail and hospitality most impacted, defense least impacted. We are giving more points to businesses with less than 25 employees in hospitality than we are in defense in this model, but so I don't want to, I don't want to hide that from anybody, but that's straight out of the economic data from the Commonwealth, so we think it's defensible.
Mike, you had asked that question, how do we know where the need is, or who's really being impacted, and we do have some data, the survey, and so, is there anyone, I mean, I'm kind of with Bill, I don't think we should be reimbursing people for taxes, that they're going to turn around and pay the city, you know, I don't know, we have that as a for, because just so everybody knows, what staff is doing is, they're taking this spreadsheet and these criteria and this guidance, and they're going to be able to sort of call these applications based on this, and score them based on this spreadsheet, so this is going to impact what gets to us, so I think we need to be clear on.
And so, what I did was, I just changed, so the policy contemplates that we'll pay out for these things, so I just changed the score to the same for all uses that are approved within the policy.
All uses are equal.
All, our uses are equal, because we, I mean, that's what the policy was written to do, so.
Well, then, it's going to be different. All right, so do we have, I think, unless there are any other questions, the chair will entertain a motion that we approve. Now, the way this policy is now, everything comes ultimately before this body for approval, which is slightly different than what the version that council saw. Yep.
You can bring every application before the committee.
We're going to bring, we're going to bring you a docket of applications that our team has scored, we'll show you the score that we put on them, and we're going to ask you to fund them based on that program. That's why this, that's why this ranking is important, because this is what we're going to use to call the herd, and we're coming back and asking for money in a week.
And when we see that it's going to be the name of the applicant and some basis for your determination, right?
That's right.
Is there going to be a staff write-up on each, or?
If we can get it done. I mean, the, if we, that's, but yes.
I thought you had a scoring mechanism, we can look at the scores, right?
Yes, sir, you'll have scores on every item.
And then we'll need disclosures on every item, so we.
We'll have those for you.
All right.
I'll move adoption as modified.
So, we have a motion.
Second.
Taylor.
Second.
Taylor seconded, all right, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. That motion carries, and I will see those of you who are leaving on Tuesday.
Thank you all very much.
All right.
Thank you, all right.
So, we're done. Let me ask the folks to terminate outside, because I do have one, I do have one.
Do I have to? Do you have to have anything?
Yeah, we can't do close without.
Okay, all right.
We have to keep it, we can't, if we get it.
Yeah.
So, we're having our regular meeting on Tuesday.
On Tuesday.
Should we plan longer? I don't have time for that.